Good evening. All right. Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for May 22, 2023. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Judy Hutchins.
Here.
Rachel Hulteen.
Present.
Amanda Weaver. Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven members of council present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, and I see our...
We have eight members of council.
Looks like our, uh, Council Weaver is here, so thank you very much. Uh, councilors, in your packet you have, um, study session notes from May 21, 2023, and City Council meeting minutes for May 6, 2023. Are there any corrections to be noted in either of these? Seeing none, we will let the, uh, notes and minutes stand approved as submitted with our thanks to the clerk. Uh, any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will go with the agenda as presented, and we have several proclamations tonight. Our first proclamation is in support of LB LGBTQ+ Pride Month, June 2023. Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas, we are all welcome in the city of Wheat Ridge to live, work, play, and every family deserves a place to call home, where they feel safe, happy, supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas, the city denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas, Pride Month began on June 28, 1969, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, after LB LGBTQ+ and allied friends rose and fought against consistent, constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, we appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus LGBTQ+ community, which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas, it is imperative that every person in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, despite being marginalized, LGBTQ+ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bud Starke, the mayor, and the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado declare the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice, dated this 22nd day of May, 2023. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for Wheat Ridge Safety Month, and I would like to invite our risk manager, Kelly McLaughlin, to join me at the podium. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks for coming up. Whereas, National Safety Month focuses on reducing the leading causes of injury and death at work on the roads and in our homes and communities, and drawing attention to safe practices that will decrease the likelihood of accidents. And whereas, all community members deserve to live in communities that promote safe and healthy living environments. And whereas, safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, business, and industry, employees as well as the public. And whereas, through the support and observance of National Safety Month each year, employers are helping to reverse and increase in accidental injuries and deaths in the workplace. And whereas, the city supports safe efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees by supporting the Be Safe Safety Committee. And whereas, the city works to prevent accidental injuries by educating employees about safe, healthy practices in the workplace through training and encouragement. And whereas, the beginning of the summer season, traditionally a time of increased accidents and injuries, is an appropriate time to focus the attention on risk management and s- and safety. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bud Starke, mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, and the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge formally designate the month of June 2023 as Wheat Ridge Safety Month, and urge all community members to establish and maintain safe practices in their homes, workplaces, and communities, dated this 22nd day of May, 2023. There's a little something for you. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, first of all, thank you so much for this proclamation. I accept it on behalf of the amazing City Wheat Ridge Safety Committee. I wanted to just take a minute and introduce myself. My name's Kelly McLaughlin. I've met a few of you under other circumstances. However, I am happy to say that I am the first ever risk management coordinator for the city of Wheat Ridge. Wanted to tell you a little bit about what's been going on since I took over. We did our first SIRS audit since I have been here. I'm happy to say that we got scored 100 out of 100 possible points.
All right.
Plus nine bonus points, and we can take those bonus points and they'll help us reduce our premium for our 2024 renewals, so that's great news for us. Also been hard at work with Safety Committee. We have a new logo. It's the Safety Bee, so you'll see him on so all sorts of things because we're Be Safe. And, um, he'll be buzzing around the city and reminding people about safe work practices. We also have started two new initiatives. One is the Goal Program, which just literally means get out and look when you're backing up if you can't see. We're also doing one that's a near miss program, and we're going to encourage employees to report concerns rather than have them become accidents, so that'll be moving forward, so you'll see that. We're having our first annual Safety Soiree, we called it, and so it's going to be at the Anderson Park Pavilion. If any of you'd like to come out, it's June 6th, it's a Tuesday, June 6th in the morning. We have pancakes, coffee, safety swag, yes, safety swag's actually a thing, safety swag, and we'll have some safety stations. And then we've also been working on kind of revising our work comp process to make it a little bit, um, more streamlined. We can get stuff to our injured employees faster, designated provider lists, all that kind of thing. And then my last major thing I've been doing is the never-ending job of claims processing. So I pro- I process claims both, um, on behalf of the city as well as claims against the city. And so far this year, we have, um, recovered fif- over $15,000 worth of claims that have hurt damage to the city, so we're happy to report that. So thanks again for the proclamation. Um, if y'all have any questions or just want to talk risk, because I know that's what people want to do, please feel free to reach out and let me know.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, and we'll be looking for your bee buzzing around town to keep those claims down, so thank you. I'd like to ask Charles Sprague to join me at the, uh, at the podium now. Come on up. Mr. Sprague is the, uh, Sprague is the instructor for the STEM program. And the STEM program, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, program at Wheat Ridge High School, was started in 2014 and has been growing ever since. The purpose of the program is to allow students to pursue their engineering passion on large-scale projects in group settings. The program has participated in the prestigious Shell Eco Marathon every year since 2014, and they're winners too. The Battle Bot Division was created in 2019 and has participated every year since as well. In addition, students present to local community groups and offer tours at the high school uh, to show off their projects in production and other work they're doing. So Mr. Sprague, the microphone is yours.
Thank you. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. We really appreciate the opportunity to come see you. Um, it is not about me, so I need to bring my students up. So students, come on up, line up up here in front, please. All right, Natalie Scoot in on the other side of Corbin, please. Thanks. So what you have here are an awful, or is a main core of the students at Wheat Ridge High School over the last two years. Uh, and one thing I'm going to do is you can't come and not say anything, so I'm going to have them start introducing themselves and also say how many years they've been in the program, starting with Rem on the very end. All right, let's give them a round of applause, please. As Mayor Starke said, the STEM program got off to a great start in 2014. We do have two intercontinental championships under our belts. Everybody knows that COVID came in in 2020, kind of put a halt to everything. Who you see up here is the group that restarted the program and got us back on the map to great learning and working together. Um, in the last two years, this group that you see here, they have placed fourth at the Shell Eco Marathon, they have placed ninth at the Shell Eco Marathon, they have won the prestigious, um, keep it, uh, I forgot the term, sorry. The, uh, the award of the spirit for a Shell Eco Marathon, they work for an entire day to try to get a fuel cell to work. And then they also are going to be part of a small documentary that Shell is going to be putting on, uh, for the Eco Marathon. Eco Marathon is intercontinental, it is all North, Central, and South America, and that includes colleges and universities from all over. So they have done a tremendous job in their, uh, two years since we came out of COVID. Here on your right-hand side, we have the Battle Bot team. Last year they went in and they won the Innovation Award for having the best innovation out of all of the schools in Colorado. And then this year, they actually won the state championships for the National Robotics League Battle Bot Competition for the 15-pound and under division. Congratulations, everybody. These are great students right now. They have been ever since I've met them, and they've been in the program, and these are going to be our great leaders of tomorrow. Congratulations for everything that you have done, and thank you once again for letting us come and see you today. Thank you.
Let's get some pictures, so you get up there with them. We're also here tonight to recognize the Jeffco 4A League Champions Wheat Ridge High School Boy Swimming Team, and I'd like to invite Jason Campbell, the athletic director, up to, to join me at the podium. Great job.
I wasn't me, man. Council members, uh, Mayor, thank you for inviting me back. I would, I like to do this regularly. I enjoy it. Um, but I'm not going to run for city council, so I'm not qualified. Um, I, I want to start by saying, actually, our boys swim team are back-to-back league champions, and, um, and we have one of the most humble coaches on the planet that would never, ever, ever, ever tell anyone about this, but he is also back-to-back Coach of the Year in Jefferson County for 4A schools. In addition to that, he was also named, we actually have two honors from a state level. Uh, one of our swimmers who is not here tonight, um, his name is Joaquin Contreras-Falico. He actually was named a 4A, uh, Swimmer of the Year, uh, by the state of Colorado. Yeah, and then, yeah. And then, not to be outdone, Coach Miller also got named for a State Coach of the Year. So, with that being said, I'm going to bring, uh, the team up. Uh, Coach Miller, you can come on up, talk about your team, and I'm going to step to the side because I had nothing to do with it.
All right, Coach, thank you. Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, guys, come on up. Uh, thank you for having us here, um, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, yes, this is our second year, uh, winning league, and this was really, I know swimming is a, when you think of swimming, you think of it as a, um, individual sport, but this was a total team effort. Um, we won eight out of the 12 events at league, but we wouldn't have won league without everyone on the team. We had, I, I believe we had 22 swimmers that were supposed to swim. We had 20, we had someone gets, a couple kids get sick, so we had 20 actually swim at league, but then we had 18 of those placed at league, and they contributed to the score that we had at league, and they all just swam amazingly well. Going into league, um, if we would have scored the events and then we would have fallen how they were supposed to, we would have lost by 30 points. We ended up winning by 26 points, and that's because guys stepped up, got faster, and it's just because they were willing to work hard and really buy into what we did this year. Um, I'd really like to thank, um, Kevin DeForest, also my assistant coach. He was a huge part of this also. Um, he, he really helped train everybody. Oh, Kevin, come on up. He was, he was very instrumental in the training of the team and just really inspiring them to become a team. That was the big thing, his big push this year, and our big push was becoming a team, which, like I said, with swimming is kind of unusual. But these guys really bought in and did a great job this year, and I just really thank these guys for the hard work they put in, and just hopefully next year we can continue on and come back again next year for the third time in a row. Thank you.
Let's get a picture. Okay, we are now at our public's right to speak. Any member of the public may come at this time and address the council on any item that is not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up to speak now, but if you're here in the hall and would like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium. If you're joining us, uh, on the online format, if you would raise your hand in the virtual format, we'll bring you into the meeting. And I'll give it just a moment to see, I don't have anybody signed up or anybody coming forward, and no one is, uh, raising their hand online, so we'll...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Someone raised a hand and then lowered it.
Okay, if you are joining us online and would like to speak under public's right to speak, you may do so now. We will also, uh, have an opportunity to speak on the, uh, hearing items as they come up on the agenda. Okay, I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll go, uh, close our public's right to speak, go to our agenda item number one. Uh, Council Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 10, 2023, An Ordnance Amending Articles 1 and 4 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the City's Subdivision Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments Therewith, at issue. Their proposed ordinance makes necessary updates to Articles 1 and 4 of Chapter 26 of the code specifically to modernize and clean up portions of the city's subdivision requirements. These updates include changing incorrect or outdated cross-references, adding modern terminology, clarifying existing requirements, updating application requirements, and removing section of the code that conflict with the current subdivision regulations. The ordinance clarifies when owner's associations are required and the obligation of those associations, and it clarifies requirements for drainage and irrigation facilities.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation on this item.
We do. Lauren Micalack, our community of health director, has a brief presentation.
Okay, Director Micalack.
Thank you. Um, so this code amendment was presented and discussed in study session on February 6th. That was the evening that we had a variety of topics, and this was one of the ones that council gave direction to proceed to ordinance. Um, as noted in the introduction, it touches a few topics. It's really focused on cleanup and clarity. I'm not planning to summarize tonight each of those topics, but you saw that they're detailed in the staff report. Um, I do want to note that this ordinance does not change the way in which we process subdivision cases at public hearing. That was a separate conversation that will proceed as a separate ordinance, not a part of this evening's discussion. Um, and then lastly, I should note that Planning Commission reviewed the ordinance, recommended approval with no changes, and we have not had any public comment on this topic to date. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from, uh, from council, I will invite the public to speak on this item. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here at City Hall and would like to speak, you may do so now, coming to the podium. And if you're joining us in the online format and wish to speak on this agenda item number one, please raise your hand and we will bring you into the meeting.
No one, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close our right, public's right to speak and go to questions from council. Questions from council before I close the public hearing. Going to close the public hearing, and may I have a motion on this? Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 10, 2023, An Ordnance Amending Articles 1 and 4 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the City's Subdivision Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments Therewith, on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we will go to agenda item number two. Councilor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 11-2023, An Ordnance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Sim Street, a Public Roadway. At issue, the city owns an isolated strip of real property as right-of-way that is 24 feet by 165 feet located along the east side of 4455 Sim Street. When the property was acquired by Jefferson County in 1955, it was intended as right-of-way for a future street extension. Community development has determined that the parcel does not serve a public purpose because an extension of Sim Street is not practical at this location.
Thank you. Uh, this is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Lauren Micalack again.
Okay, Director Micalack, one more time.
Thank you. Um, even more brief on this topic, the summary by Councilmember Nosler Beck is complete. We do have, um, in your packet at the last page for this item is an aerial. We can pull that up on the screen if we need to. Um, in short, our engineering division has been working with the property owner, the county, and with Mr. Dahl over the last number of months, um, and Rocky Maxalka from our engineering division and I are here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open it up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now, and if you, uh, are online, you may raise your hand. I don't see anybody raising their hand or joining us, so we will go to questions from council. Any questions from council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2023, An Ordnance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City in a Portion of Sim Street, a Public Roadway, on second reading, and that it takes effect immediately after final publication. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman, and a little musical interlude there. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number three. Councilor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 12-2023, An Ordnance Amending Section 17-36 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Address the Use of Assisted Mobility Devices in Conservation Areas. At issue on July 11, 2022, City Council amended Section 17-52 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to permit the use of assisted mobility devices in conservation areas by persons with disabilities. Subsequently, it was determined additional sections of the code should have also been amended as well to address the same issue. This ordinance will amend Section 17-36 to address the use of mobility devices in conservation areas.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2023, An Ordnance Amending Section 17-36 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Address the Use of Assisted Mobility Devices in Conservation Areas. On first reading, order published, public hearing set for Monday, June 12, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as a virtual meeting in the City Council chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes unanimously. The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number four. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 13-2023, An Ordnance Repealing and Amending Certain Weapon Offenses in Chapter 16 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws in Response to U.S. Supreme Court Case Law. At issue, this ordinance will repeal Section 16-84 and 16-87 and amend 16, or Section 16-89 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Conform with the recent Supreme Court ruling in New York State Rifle and Pistol Association Incorporated versus Braun concerning weapon offenses.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2023, An Ordnance Repealing and Amending Certain Weapon Offenses in Chapter 16 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws in Response to the U.S. Supreme Court Case Law. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, June 12th, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in City Council chambers, and that it take effect upon adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. May I have the name of the person who seconded?
That was Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number five. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 21-2023, excuse me, 29-2023, A Resolution Adopting the 2023 City of Wheat Ridge Open Space Management Plan. I went too fast past the issue. Just a moment. Over the past year, Logan Simpson worked closely with Parks, Forestry, and Open Space staff to lead a robust process of obtaining feedback from the Wheat Ridge community, staff members, and elected officials to inform the city's updated open space management plan with the unanimous approval of the Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Commission. The plan is now ready for formal adoption by City Council.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation.
We do. Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director, is going to introduce this item.
Okay, Director O'Donnell.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As stated, we're hoping for your support to adopt the 2023 Open Space Management Plan this evening, which was last updated in 2002. You may recall that Taylor Broyhill with Logan Simpson shared the preliminary recommendations with you in January, and since then, the team has worked hard to compile a final draft, which was, I believe, shared with everybody last week. It looks like this. I'd like to acknowledge that the Parks and Recreation Commission is in support of the draft, and our Chair Cambria Rollo couldn't be here this evening, but I do see a member, Christine Semeniyuk. Am I saying your name right, Christine? She's a new District Two representative with us, so thank you for being here, Christine. And I'd also like to note that a few of our staff members are here today. Andrew McDonald, our Forestry and Open Space Supervisor, is online. He was instrumental in putting this plan together, as was our Grant and Special Project Administrator, Brandon Altenberg, who's also here if there's any questions. And our Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Manager, Benny Paze, is here. If, again, if there are any questions, he joined us in late February, so wasn't part of this whole process, but is certainly an integral part at this point. So without further ado, I would like to ask Taylor Broyhill with Logan Simpson to come up for the presentation.
Thank you, Director O'Donnell. And, okay, great, and just use the mouse to move it. Mayor Starker, City Council, thank you so much for considering the plan for adoption. Again, my name is Taylor Broyhill. I'm an associate planner with Logan Simpson and have been the project manager, working with Parks, Forestry, and Open Space staff over the last year to update the city's previously adopted 2002 Open Space Management Plan. So we kicked off the process. Let's see, is it, is it the keyboard? Okay. So we kicked off the process approximately one year ago, May 2022, and we worked through a seven-phase planning process to develop the visually compelling and actionable open space management plan that you all received last week. As mentioned, the first open space management plan was adopted in 2002, and the purpose of this plan is to update and replace that document to develop an updated framework for priorities and for specific management direction for managing the city's open space, for the Green Belt, Lewis Meadows, any future open space acquisition, as well as the Clear Creek Trail. The plan emphasizes really sort of the underlying current. The theme is balance of recreation and conservation. And the planning horizon for most action items within the plan is 10 to 15 years, although there are a few recommendations that will require probably longer than that to fully be realized. So public engagement has been a cornerstone of the planning process and has really allowed us to cultivate public trust in the process, as well as fully understand the community's needs and preferences related to open space in the Clear Creek Trail, and essentially build ownership within the plan and support for implementation. We offered a series of online and in-person engagement opportunities throughout the process, and overall engaged approximately 580 members of the Wheat Ridge community. And we engaged the community in three stages. So we first started just by listening to the community and really just getting an understanding of the community's concerns, their ideas, and ultimately their vision for open space in the Clear Creek Trail. Then we distilled that information into preliminary recommendations and common themes, and presented that back to the community in order to ensure that we captured their intent and their preferences accurately the first time around. And then our third stage of engagement gave the community the opportunity to review the draft plan through an online platform where they could provide comments, as well as at an open house event that was held on March 30th. The plan is guided by a unifying vision that was adapted from the 2002 Open Space Management Plan, and it, again, is emphasizing the importance of that balance between conservation and recreational use. And so that vision states that the Wheat Ridge community envisions a future where open space is stewarded as a wondrous, wild, and renewing sanctuary for present and future generations of plant, animal, and human communities. Wheat Ridge Open Space balances recreation with conservation and restoration of natural ecosystems. And it's that vision that every single action and strategy within Chapter 4 of the plan, which is the management plan, strives to help realize that vision. And so the management plan, Chapter 4, is really the heart of the document. This is the chapter that contains, I believe, 162 different actions, and those are aimed at, again, just helping to achieve that vision. And those actions are organized according to six different overarching goals that address safety, conservation, connectivity, user and visitor education, as well as visitor experience and partnerships. And again, there are 162 different recommendations in the plan. Some of these, the Department and the Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Division has already started on, or is continuing some of the great practices that they have been doing all along. So next, I will just sort of highlight some of the big-picture ideas and recommendations from the plan. We won't go through all 162 tonight. So each of, you know, if you noticed on the previous slide, there are some letters that precede each of the goals, and those are part of just an identifying system within the plan that links recommendations to the maps in the document, as well as the implementation matrix. And so on this particular map, we are displaying locations of riparian and habitat restoration projects that are identified within the plan. So as you're reading through recommendations, you can see a recommendation and then go find that specific project on the map to understand sort of the geographic area of where that would take place. So the plan identifies several habitat and riparian restoration projects, including restoring wetlands, assessing the health of the native evergreens that are present in the Green Belt, as well as restoration of the various lakes, the banks in particular, with a focus on native species, as well as restoration along the riparian corridor of Clear Creek. One of those areas, and I presented this to you briefly last time when I was here in January, but one of those areas that really encapsulates the opportunity to balance recreation with conservation is Tabor Lake. And so this illustration is included in the plan, and it sort of just highlights some of the restoration activities that are recommended in conjunction with the development of the Tabor Lake Trail that staff is currently working on to secure funding for. And so this includes restoration along the shoreline of the lake of Clear Creek, and then, of course, the colonial waterbird nesting island that's there in the center of the lake. And essentially, this recommend, these recommendations are coming out of the realization that as there is increased visitation to this area, upon completion of the trail, there will need to be an additional equal investment in restoration in order to maintain environmental quality in this area. Westlake is another location where there is an opportunity to align conservation and recreation values in an area where there's existing significant network of social trails in this area. And so the recommendation is to consolidate those into a single corridor that's an extension of the existing conservation trail that would then be managed by the city. And that would be complemented by a reclamation of all the other social trails in that area. And so the idea here is to limit human impact to a single corridor while acknowledging that people will still likely try to access this area because there's a strong desire from the community for a more natural experience, a backcountry experience, and this area provides that. But it's got to be balanced with recognition that there is some sensitive habitat in this area, as well as historic wetlands. And so like those restoration projects, we've also identified and mapped locations for new trail heads or trail access points, as well as improvements to existing Green Belt and trail access areas, access points. And one of those projects is the crossing at Kipling Street. And so we talked about this last time, but I'll just quickly summarize. Over and over again throughout public engagement, we heard a consistent message from the community to evaluate this crossing and sort of identify a potential solution to the current context, which is to follow the trail south about half a mile. And so we spent a little extra time evaluating this crossing, sorry, you're not seeing it on screen, evaluating this crossing, and our preliminary recommendation or analysis identifies that an at-grade crossing is likely the most feasible treatment here, specifically a pedestrian hybrid beacon. And that is the crossing that you see there in the left-hand corner that is activated by users when they need to cross. But the recommendation of the plan is to pursue a detailed feasibility study to consider this treatment, and so that would involve contracting with a traffic engineer to complete that study, as well as including CDOT's Region 1 engineer in that process in order to conduct the user accounts, the crossing that would need to happen in this location. The plan also carries forward and remaps the resource management zones that were first introduced in the 2002 plan. And essentially, what these zones do is categorize land within the Green Belt into four categories along a spectrum of management treatments. And so that ranges at one end from conservation, where the primary focus may be, to focus on natural resource protection. And then at the other end of that spectrum, areas where it is, where the ecosystem can tolerate more human impacts and where recreation is more appropriate to occur. This land also identifies high priority projects. So out of, I think, 39 individual projects that were identified as part of this planning process, eight of those emerged as consistent priorities when we workshopped that with Parks, Forestry, and Open Space staff, with the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the public at the open house event that we had. And so those are the projects you see listed here, although I will note they are not in any particular order on this list. And the plan does acknowledge that priorities should be reconsidered annually as new needs and opportunities emerge and shift. And then finally, Chapter 5 wraps up the plan with implementation strategies for plan monitoring and updates, land acquisition, operations, and staff capacity, project prioritization criteria, and costs, as well as a timeframe for phasing implementation, and a discussion of potential funding sources. So it's just a quick overview of a plan that is, I think, almost approaching 200 pages. But at this point, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broyhill. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium. If you're joining us online and would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting. Ask our clerk, and it doesn't look like we've had anybody coming forward, so we'll close our public's right to speak on this one and go to questions from council. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just, this is somewhat superficial, but when I was looking in this, the Bike Ped Master Plan that you have referenced there is actually our old one and not our more recent one. And I just want to check and make sure you used our more recent Bike Ped Master Plan as part of the study. It references the 2010 version, and we have a 2017?
Okay, and that's in the image that's up there in Chapter 1. I do have both copies of those plans that we did reference for this, but we should update that final draft with the correct photo, so thank you.
Okay, just, yeah, because there's some substantial differences between them.
Definitely.
Okay, awesome. And then, so the crippling, I'm going to call it the crippling crossing, the Kipling crossing, which luckily has not crippled me yet. So when you guys were, I was a little confused. Did you actually do any studies of it, or did you do evaluations of like possible treatments, and this was like the recommendation that came out of just like your institutional knowledge?
Yes, so we did engage a traffic engineer to preliminarily take a look at this intersection and evaluate below-grade crossings. So that would be an underpass, evaluate a grade-separated crossing like an overpass, and then evaluate multiple at-grade crossings. And so I believe it's Appendix B. There is a full memo documenting that analysis. However, it did not meet, based on just like the limited scope of this project, the level of standard that CDOT requires for documentation to like move forward with actually implementing this crossing. So they require counts of the number of users who are crossing in that area. We did not conduct counts. And so the memo that we include that details and states what those counts are. I think for the pedestrian hybrid beacon, that threshold is relatively low, and just from my observation and from our traffic engineer's observation, could probably very likely be met at that particular crossing with the number of users who are crossing in that area. However, we didn't actually conduct those counts. And so that's where a traffic engineering study would need to take place in order to basically satisfy CDOT's requirements.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Additional questions? Counselor Nosler Beck?
Just last time we talked about this plan, I had asked if maybe we had reached out to some of the businesses in the area, and I just wanted to see if there had been any conversations or plans to...
Yeah, and that was with regard to the Westlake concept. I do remember that. And I do think that would be an excellent opportunity to work with adjacent property owners. I did talk with staff about it, and our consensus was that at this time, we didn't have like an action essentially to act on, but, so we didn't contact those folks quite yet. But it is a recommendation to work with them, both on access control, like access coming from those properties, as well as revegetation, or any efforts in that area, the shared property line.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. One that just pertains to Anderson Park because I happened to drive along there today, and the public restrooms are closed, and one of the... And one of the recommendations in this plan kind of indicates more public restroom opportunities maybe along the creek. So are we planning on reopening those, or are we planning on like restructuring those? What would that look like?
I, yeah, I'll note that public engagement, there was a desire for additional restroom facilities, but as far as like the current context, all right.
I would just say we're talking internally about solutions to be able to open them up more. I know that it's a desire of our Parks and Recreation Commission as well, so our staff is working on that now.
Thank you. And then one of the opportunities, Kipling East to Anderson Park addresses, consider formalizing legal public creek access. I just kind of wanted to see and gauge where we are in those conversations because I have had an organization that's based out of Golden reach out, and they'd like to have tubing along Clear Creek within Wheat Ridge. And I know that we have some safety concerns because of the low, you know, hanging infrastructure and potential risk that comes along with that. I mean, they forwarded a pretty significant and thorough memo in regards to, it seems as if digging out the creek bed would probably be the easiest option in that regard, but then I think that that kind of gets hairy with conservation. And so I just don't know how, like, you know, robust that conversation has been in having recreational uses along the creek. So I just wanted to see if you could touch on that.
Yeah, definitely. To quickly answer your question, we don't make a strong recommendation one way or the other in this plan. And the reason for that is we've heard conflicting input sort of on both sides of the issue from the community. And so there's also, as you mentioned, there are the safety concerns, and then there is also, I think, more legal considerations in terms of ownership of the actual creek bed, who owns the waterway and those kinds of things. And so there's probably a significant number of, I think, just some research and issues to be resolved before there could be a decision made on that. And so our recommendation in the plan is to maybe continue some additional public engagement to further sort of elucidate, if recreation were allowed, sort of what would that look like, as well as look into some of those more, I would say, technical issues to determine if it is even a possibility.
Thank you, because I think, you know, in regards to the improvements at Anderson Park specifically, when we have the rock cutouts, it kind of encourages people to get in the water or at least, you know, stick their feet in. And so I think it kind of sends a mixed signal from our end when it's illegal to be in the creek, and yet we're kind of encouraging it by making it enticing to do so.
Yes, definitely. And that sentiment, we definitely heard that in our engagement. And so I think, yeah, like I said, there is some additional research that needs to be done there for sure.
Ms. Barrowhill, I had a question. Do we have significant flood risk of our facilities in the creek bed? And I know we're going to have floods, do we have a great deal of concern that they'll damage our facilities?
So there are, yeah, the 100-year flood plain is sort of, you can imagine, it follows along the creek corridor as well as Lena Gulch. And the floodway itself does encompass a fairly large area. And so many of our recommendations in terms of investment would be related to restoration projects, places where we, where there could be an opportunity to restore wetlands that can, during seasonal flooding, like re-receive some of those floodwaters. So I think the, the risk seems to remain the same as it has been, although one of our recommendations and one thing we looked at is, especially in the Lewis Meadows area as well, is considering any opportunities to continue to acquire parcels that, where it makes sense, that are within the floodway in order to complete some of these restoration projects or to, you know, take structures out of that risk area.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Do you want? No? Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much. Great, great presentation. If there are no more questions, Ms. Weaver, I'll ask for a motion on this item.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 29-2023, a resolution adopting the 2023 City of Wheat Ridge Open Space Management Plan.
Second. Oh my, okay, who's going to get it? All right, he raised his hand, or second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wish all of our lengthy 100-plus-page plans that we had to look at had so many great pictures in them. It was my favorite to look at. So a couple of things, it's just, it was fun to read. I mean, I almost feel like the first part of it should be required reading for our high schoolers to better understand where they live and learn. And it was just kind of fun to get reconnected. I moved here because I loved the Clear Creek Trail so much. And I'm excited about this because I also know how good our Parks and Rec Department is at implementation. And so I know it's really helpful when we have something as precious as the Clear Creek Trail, which I think we all really strongly feel is a great representation of our community, and so many of us enjoy it. And I love, in the summer, I ride my bike on it almost every day, and there's just kids out and families. And so I'm just, I'm excited to see this with a lot of confidence and knowledge that Parks and Rec will do a great job with this to move these recommendations forward. One thing, just again, to go back to the, what I'm going to now call the crippling crossing, there is money from CDOT, the HSIP funding, which is the Highway Safety Improvement Plan Safety. Unfortunately, Colorado's vulnerable road user fatality rate was higher than 15%. So CDOT has to use 15% of its HSIP funds on bike and ped locations. And in the Region 1 bike ped safety study, that location was the second-rate systemic dangerous location in Region 1. So there should be some money in the next couple of years for the city to be able to go after that without having to beg Dr. Cog. So I'd really encourage the city to move forward with getting the study done while there's still some funding that I think we're very, very competitive for, for a solution there. And then, not in here, or maybe it's tangentially, we have persistent flooding problems with both 44th Avenue and then Kipling Underpass. And just, Patrick was really responsive when I reached out recently, and someone pretty quickly put up detour signs at Kipling. But it would be really great to have a detour plan with actually directional signage that directs people in the best way for them. Like, the sign went up, and it was at first down where they had to turn around instead of where they could detour. So I just would love to request Parks and Rec to have a underpass flooding sign, a detour program at the ready, so when that happens, we're safely detouring people at the point where they can make the change in their travels to actually like safely cross somewhere else. That would be great. Otherwise, I'm really happy to be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thanks, thanks for this great plan. And I am a different kind of user as what I think the plan really expressed all the different needs we have in Wheat Ridge. And I really appreciated the word wrapping with conservation and that it's not this separate thing, but it's part of Parks and Recreation. And I just really appreciated that explanation. I think the word was adaptive conservation management. It's awesome. But I very much appreciate the sectioning off of recognizing sort of higher use versus conservation areas, and I think you called them passive areas. I think that's a really interesting way to think about both our natural aspects and our human use of it. So thank you for a really good, comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all of the Parks and Rec staff and anyone that collaborated on this project. As Councilmember Hulteen said, the pictures were awesome. I was trying to figure out if I could determine where exactly they were located. And I want to say, I just love that my childhood nickname of Clear Creek, the Green Belt, has made its way to mainstream policy. You know, it was, I think, a term of endearment, and I don't know how robust it was back in the day. I say that like, yeah, it wasn't just two decades ago. But I really appreciate the opportunity to raise my children in this community and have them experience some of the same things that I really enjoyed as a child. We love walking our dogs or riding our bikes to Anderson Park and beyond, and you've just done a phenomenal job, not only on the improvements with Anderson Park and Prospect Park, which happened to be in District 4, but I love this master plan and the vision that you have for our future. So I just really want to thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Okay. Mr. O.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it short. Thank you so much for the plan. I see some lot of opportunities, especially for the Prospect Park area. I spent so much time with my kids in the past and cycling on that trail, and I really look forward to a strong future for Wheat Ridge, beautifying that area and creating more opportunities for us. Thank you.
Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Great presentation. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 6. Counselor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 30-2023, a resolution approving a public art donation agreement with Karen Schelke and the use of public art funds for costs associated with transportation and installation of the art piece. At issue, Karen Schelke, a Wheat Ridge resident, is donating a piece of public art valued at $25,000 to the City of Wheat Ridge. The piece is titled Dancing Pony by artist Kevin Botts and will be installed at Prospect Park. Staff is requesting approval of a donation agreement with Ms. Schelke and approval to utilize the city's public art fund to pay for the transportation and installation of the art piece as well as a small plaque.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Karen O'Donnell is still up here.
Okay, Director O'Donnell.
Hi again. This is another exciting thing to bring forward to council. So just to tell you a little bit about the process, as mentioned in the introduction, Karen Schelke is a resident in Wheat Ridge, and she approached me and asked if she could donate a piece of art. She was very excited about it, and I said, well, you have to follow the public art management plan. And part of that, it begins with her sharing a proposal for what she'd like to donate and thinking through all of the things like getting the art here, getting it installed, the plaque, lighting, all of those things. So she did send me a proposal. And then again, as part of the public art management plan, it's required that we create a committee to review the donation and send that forward again then to the Cultural Commission, and then it comes to City Council for final approval. So the public art donation committee was formed. Our members are Melinda Valentini, who's a local artist many of you probably know, Mark Root, as a city staff representative from our Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Division, Kathleen Martel, who's our Cultural Commission representative. She wanted to be there here this evening but wasn't able to attend. And Guy Namiach, as a community member, participated on this committee. And the committee met on May 1st and unanimously approved Karen's proposal. She attended the meeting as well and shared what she was interested in. And she was particularly looking at these ponies because of the history of agriculture in this community and just remembering a time when there were horses going down the road and things like that. And she also thinks that children will really appreciate this piece. So when she was talking about where she wanted it to be located, she didn't really care as long as it was a park where children would be able to engage with the art and appreciate it. So the public, again, that was unanimously approved on May 1st. And actually, part of the public art management plan details what the Cultural Commission went through in, I believe it was 2013. They looked at locations throughout the city that still needed some public art. And the high priority locations have mostly had art installed since then, such as Anderson Park, Hopper Hollow. And the one that doesn't have funding and doesn't currently have art is Prospect Park. So that's really where the committee was looking at putting this piece. And again, Karen thought that that was a great location closer to the trail, just as people are kind of going by and engaging with different components in the park. So it went to the Cultural Commission on May 10th and was unanimously approved by the Cultural Commission. And again, the proposed location is Prospect Park. So these are some examples of the ponies. They look like origami, that's what they're intended to look at, look like. And the committee reviewed, they just had some questions about safety, as a lot of people do. You might, you know, ask the question, are children going to climb on the art? It's not intended for that, but likely, we all know that children, some children probably will, and that's okay. When public art is created, it's created to be safe for that kind of use because any public artist knows that that is a potential for sure. So the action that we are requesting this evening is just the approval of the public art donation agreement that was drafted to be shared with the donor, Karen Schelke, and then the use of public art funds to have the piece delivered here, installed, and include a plaque. So if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to the public. If you would like to speak on this, you may do so now. Don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're online, you may raise your hand.
No one's.
Or if you're here, okay. We will go to questions from council then. Public, any representative, or, excuse me, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, but this is just so wonderful, the artwork. I mean, it draws you to it. And it is true, we used to have quite a few horses that were around, and people will remember that who've been here a long time. And it's just, it's wonderful. Who doesn't like a horse? I think it's great.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Director O'Donnell, Counselor Hutchinson, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 30-2023, a resolution approving a public art donation agreement with Karen Schelke and the use of public art funds for costs associated with transportation and installation of the art piece.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
I just want to chime in on the Love Fest. I think it's, first of all, just a huge thank you to Karen for donating the piece to our city. That's incredibly generous of her, and it is a fabulous piece of art. I think it's really going to be captivating for people of all ages, and it's a great location. And I'm glad it's a city that has got a good art program and places to put art and people to enjoy it. So I just, between the Clear Creek Master Plan and this, it's just a happy night here on council, so I'm excited to vote for this.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 7. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 31-2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $76,398 for the addition of one full-time housing program administrator. At issue, City Council adopted the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan on January 9th, 2023, to address one of the city and state's most pressing issues. The action plan prioritizes hiring at least one new staff person to implement the action plan and manage the city's Affordable Housing Fund and associated programs. The city does not currently have the staff expertise or capacity to implement the action plan in contrast to peer cities that have similar positions.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report?
We do, from Ms. Mikulak again.
Okay, Director Mikulak.
Thank you. Just briefly to add to the comments in the introduction, we know that sometimes new position requests come to you as part of the budget process, and the reason that we're coming a little earlier than that is because we think there's a real opportunity to take advantage of some sort of the development potential in Wheat Ridge, to the extent we want to pursue or continue to explore an inclusionary ordinance, and also to take advantage of some of the state programs and funding that are moving forward pretty quickly, particularly in relationship to Proposition 123. So the resolution amount of $76,000 assumes that we would hire somebody mid-year, which is before your normal budget cycle, and that's why we're here tonight instead. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. And if you're joining us online, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting.
No, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't see anybody coming forward, so we will go to questions from council. Counselor Hoppe. Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, Lauren, my, so I've, I've long been concerned about our shrinking opportunities to be able to put any sort of, um, plan or enforcement into get affordable housing into like our, we're getting to the point where we're pretty built out, and, um, and so I'm just wondering, so as part of this, like, do you think that that's something that this person will be able to get them on board and online to get that type of, um, to get that type of project started, you know, before we kinda start losing our opportunities in, in our spaces where we have like large townhouse projects that could go and stuff like that?
Yes, that's our hope. I think, um, with the amount of sort of infill potential still remaining, it could, it could be impactful. So we're ready to, we would need a consultant to participate and help us with some of the analysis related to an inclusionary ordinance, but we're ready to move quickly so that we can take advantage of exactly those opportunities.
Great, thank you.
And then, then, um, to hopefully implement a naturally occurring affordable housing program, which was one of the major recommendations out of the housing strategy, um, a lot of the, um, there's potential for a lot of our, um, naturally affordable apartment buildings to be purchased and flipped to market rate. So, um, I think we wanna take advantage of, of those opportunities also.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Questions? Okay, uh, may I have a motion on this? Counselor Dozeman?
I move to approve Resolution Number 31, 2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $76,398 for the addition of one full-time housing program administrator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites this time. Um, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Okey-dokey, we got a good group going tonight. Okay, that finishes our agenda items. Uh, let us go down and see what, uh, we have for staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Uh, nothing this evening, but, uh, just a reminder, we are off next Monday, fifth Monday, and as the mayor says, a wasted Monday, because it's a fifth Monday, and it's a holiday also, so no council meeting, and then Go Nuggets.
Okay. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, okay. Well, we will go to elected officials' matters, and start with our clerk.
Nothing new this evening, Ms. May.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go with, uh, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am just wondering if anybody knows the official date when we can say hasta la vista to the Millermas? My cats get me up in the middle of the night going after them.
Lots of energy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Noslerbeck?
Um, Go Nuggets, and I'm just looking at the score right now. They're behind 56 to 68, but we probably all need to get home and go watch that. Um, and then also, uh, just, uh, wanted to give an update. Um, I really appreciated all of the staff work and the conversation around, um, the safe crossings with the schools, um, with the new articulation areas going to Stevens and, um, Prospect Valley, and, um, I've just forwarded all of that information from our study session over to the Education Committee that met last week, and then also have been sharing that with the school board, um, and the school district, just letting them know that we're having these conversations so that we can, I think one, one kind of piece of missing information that we had in that conversation last week was, um, just how many families are going from those neighborhoods over to the, the new articulation area schools, so to Prospect and Stevens. And so my request to the school district was just to keep us posted so we can properly engage with those families. Um, but thanks for all the work on that. Everybody's really appreciative that we've, that we've got an eye on it. So, um, that, and then, um, the Piranhas are starting swim team. There's still time to join the team. You can pretty much join whenever you want, but, um, come join the Wheat Ridge Piranhas. It's a blast.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and another Go Nuggets. Um, so a, a couple of things. Uh, City Councilmember Scott Omaney are excited to host a District Two meeting on, uh, June 3rd at 10 o'clock at Applebacher Park, and we're hoping, uh, everyone can join us and talk about all the good things happening in District Two and beyond. Um, and then I just, uh, so I added a new fluffy member to my household yesterday, adopted a really cute dog. Anyone who wants to see some cuteness after the meeting, please find me. Um, but I'm mentioning that here because I've heard several news stories that the shelters are all beyond capacity. Um, there's, it's actually kind of a crisis. They're, they're having to unfortunately euthanize a lot of animals right now. So if you know anyone who, uh, has an inkling to add another member to their household with four legs, sometimes they only have three legs. Uh, I really encourage people to, um, to take it, uh, give it some thought and go, go take a look. It's hard to walk out of there without, without someone. So, um, and yeah, encourage you guys to, to do that, and I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish all of our students a happy last week of school, um, and I know they'll be excited to kick off summer this year, uh, and enjoy your Memorial Day and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're honored to have our clerk with us. Mr. Miller, do you have anything that you would like to share with us tonight? Or Tre- Treasury, excuse me. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Weaver? Thank you. Uh, Counselor Omen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, uh, on that same day as on June 3rd, it looks like we're also ha- local workers is having their business block party at the, uh, Gold Marketplace, so that'll be in the afternoon, and hopefully I'll see everybody there. And just to remind everybody, uh, if you have any good things, or if you have issues with the city, please reach out to your council members, you know, so we can help you out, and, and, uh, staff has been wonderful. One, anytime I have a question for one of my constituents and getting, getting that information to me so I can, you can keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the STEM and STEM team and the swim team who came in. Those are amazing accomplishments, and we're really doing a lot of good stuff over at that high school, and we've got a really great new administration over there. And, um, obviously, if you join the Piranhas, then you will be going into a championship swim team when you get into high school, so might as well start now.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and it's been really fun to see the last couple of months all the Wheat Ridge High School, uh, student athletes and, and student clubs. It's, it's really cool to see. Um, I wanna, uh, give a shout out to the Applewood Sustainable Neighborhood Program. Uh, they had a waste recycle event this past weekend. It looked like it was a huge success. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to the, uh, send-off for One More Davis. Um, I believe I, I neglected to mention that last week. It was, it was a lot of fun. Uh, they did a great job. I, I, I went to Color Strands, obviously, as, as a former Color Strand Ram, and, and my kids go there, but, uh, One More Davis has always kinda been in my heart as well. My sister went there, and then it's named after, by marriage, my great-great uncle, something like that. But, uh, it was really cool. They had, uh, like, old-class, uh, um, pictures from, from all the way through, all the way back to the way at the beginning, so found a couple of my sister and a couple of my cousins, so that was pretty cool. Um, and then, um, last week, as Ms. Noslerbeck mentioned, we had the Wheat Ridge Education Coalition meeting, the last one for the year, um, so we'll be gearing up for, um, one in July for the summertime, but we, we did talk about the, um, maybe having some of our Rotary slash, um, Optimists, some of our, our, uh, community members maybe working some of those, those, um, high-traffic crossing areas, maybe next year, and having, uh, some of those guys volunteer to do some of that. So, um, we'll get back to you on that, but, uh, it was pretty cool tonight. I, I left, uh, a little bit early, but Color Strand and Prospect Valley, we're getting together at, uh, Prospect Park for one of the first kinda get-togethers to get all the, the kids and the parents together. Um, and that was one of the first things that I had people come up and ask me about was, was safe traffic around those schools. So, um, uh, it was nice to be able to say that we're already on it and, and working hard at it, and, um, my birthday's coming up this next weekend, so it's nice of everybody to take Monday off for me. I appreciate that.
Okay.
But if you're gonna get me something, I would appreciate if you got me something nice from Wheat Ridge, so if you can find it, find it, buy it there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I'd like to, uh, to thank the swim team and the STEM team for coming in to see us tonight. Always great to see, uh, see, uh, youth in our, in our community doing great things. I, I taped a, a quick, uh, congratulations to the graduates, the Wheat Ridge High School class of 2023, Go Farmers. Uh, thanks for, uh, sticking it out and getting through high school. It's a great accomplishment, and I wish you all the best in the summer and what's, uh, coming up next year. Uh, this week, uh, weekend, we honor Memorial Day and honor our service personnel, and if you would, uh, congratulate them and thank them for their service to our country. Uh, as you travel around our, our city, please, uh, please watch out for young folks and old folks and all folks in between walking and having a great time in our city. Slow down, be careful, and be safe out there. So if there's no more, uh, business to come before our council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.